Call this meeting to order. And before I start, before we start this meeting tonight, I want to tell you that I am so excited to see this many people.
Oh.
At a meeting in Loveville. It makes me feel so good that you're here because you care about our town. We love this town, my husband and I, and all these people sitting up here. This is the planning and zoning committee. We usually will call it on to approve everything. We haven't been able, but we are tonight, what we've got to approve. And I would like you to meet your zoning committee. And they are willing to take questions and talk to you about anything you want to talk about. And starting from our right side. I'm sorry, can you hear me back there? Okay, my husband said. This is what I always do at the council meetings. Please talk in your speaker because we can hear you. Okay. I am Janice Trumbull, and I'm chairman of the committee. See to my left, sponsor Forster. She is co-chair of the committee. Starting on the right side, Bruce Granoff. Um, next is, I'm sorry, Catherine, I want to talk to Melissa. Catherine, uh, Wick from, and we're so proud, Self, I'm sorry, Catherine Self. And, uh, next is Melissa Arnold. Next is Amanda Sosby. And then we have, um, Richard Hammett. I always say Rich because that's what we call him. And this is Angela from the zoning committee. And Tim Crater is head of zoning. And, um.
Joshua Holmes.
Joshua Holmes is head of code. People, we love Loveville. We donate a lot of time. We work hard for this city. And I'm glad that you're here for a reason, and I was glad you're here. And God bless you for coming. And I hope you stick with this, but next time, I hope every chair in this room is. And I have heard so many times, we don't know when the meetings are. So this afternoon, I went back in my little office at my house. The city didn't have anything to do with this. I did this myself on my own copy machine, my own ink, my own paper. And I made twenty-five copies of next, this year's schedule. All the meetings. So if you don't have one and you want one tonight, please come up here and pick up one. It has the workshops for the city council. The day the city council meets has all of our meetings. And if you have a call meeting, I'll be last bit on Facebook for you. But I'm going to lay these copies up here, and if you want one, you're welcome to take one. I copied them today, so there's no reason for anybody to say, I don't know when those meetings are. There they are, right there, okay? Now, we're ready to get started. And I know you're ready for me to start talking. All right. So I'm going to call this meeting to order now. And if you'll stand, my mouth has been cut. Dear Father, Father, come to you tonight, just giving you praise for the very, very many blessings that you've given us. And Lord, as we come in front of you and ask you to help us make decisions, help us to make the right decisions for our town. We love our little town, Loveville, and I like it for state, just like it is, a little town. And I think most of the people here feel the same way. So Father, we just ask that you put your hand on us. Help us to make the right decisions. Have all of these people who are supporting us to come to all the meetings, support our town, and let our town be blessed. In these things we ask, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Now, what kind of prayers would you like?
I would like to give my prayers to the United States of America. To the children of God, for which our hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, I'd like to make a motion to the agenda.
We have a couple of items that need to be moved around on the agenda. The first two, A nineteen dash zero zero fourteen. And R nineteen dash zero five. Need to move down below R nineteen dash zero one nine. If necessary, we do need annexations. Correct or property as it touches the syllables.
Let's accept the meeting by saying, I'm very loud, so if you know everybody, get in there. Uh. Thanks for having approval of last month's minutes. This was the minutes of November the twenty-first, twenty nineteen. And you should all have wanted to look at it, and it should be ready for approval. If you have any questions, you can ask now.
Can you speak up? We can't hear you back here. Thank you.
If you have any corrections or additions, uh, please let us know now. If not, do I have a motion that we accept these minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
You'll have a second? Okay, Rich, second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll now start tonight's agenda. And I'm going to ask Tim Crater, head of our planning and zoning, if he will, uh, tell you what we're discussing tonight.
First item we have on the agenda is A nineteen dash zero one six. The applicant is Mason Holding LLC. Their address is one-two-two-zero Nathan Boulevard, Suite A, Loveville, Georgia. The parcel number is C O zero four zero zero one zero five zero zero. The current zoning is V three. The applicant is asking to annex this property to C for a office complex.
Do we have any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am? If it's on Tuck Road, ma'am. Yes, sir? It's for office, it's office buildings. Do you know where Tuck Road is? You know where Tuck Road is? Okay, it's on there, and it's office, uh, you want to tell them.
Yes, office buildings. I have a home screen of the location of this property. It is a big rectangle. It's behind Eastside Towing on Tuck Road. They're wanting to do a office complex.
Excuse me, please, you need to, our audience, some of you haven't been here before. So if you need, if you want to speak, we do ask that you please state your standing and state your name. And, uh, then answer your question so that we can hear you. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
But to answer that question, the, the entrance and exit will be on to Tuck Road.
Did that answer your question, huh? Okay? Yes, sir?
No, no, I am today, and I live on that road. We have family property that joined some of this property. And this property was rezoned in Walton County, maybe two years ago approximately. And the only, we didn't oppose the zoning, but we, we were concerned with extra truck traffic because we've been hit by that in the residential side. Because we get into Tuck Road at the freeway stop. It all turned residential, actually, or the driveway, this will be. And so Walton County agreed to put in, where it could only be, could they write turns out of this place, not left turns. So that's something that we're asking is they continue to honor that.
We, we discussed this tonight and with Tim because we were aware of the, the big trucks that go in and out of there. And Tim, you want to answer that for him? We had talked about this, about the traffic out there already.
Yeah, what we had discussed with DOT's, uh, future plans to realign Tuck Road with North Sharon Church. The issue he's bringing before us is when this was approved through the county, if I'm getting this straight from our conversation, that the county's condition was no left turns would be made out of this office complex. All traffic would have to go to the right to go to Highway twenty versus taking a left and going through the residential part of this road.
Did that help you, sir?
Yes, because if you go a little ways, it's no truck traffic allowed. But that's, we all know how that is.
We know very well, I'm afraid it is, I've seen deer in the yard. Okay. Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion that we approve this? I'll make a motion that we approve this. Second, Bruce. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Did we want to add that condition to this motion?
I'm sorry.
Did we want to add that condition to this motion on top of Walton County?
About the cars? Do we need to add that, Tim? Do you change that?
That's a condition y'all would like to add to it. We need to, to reboot on that, to add that condition.
Make a motion with the condition.
I make a motion that we approve annexation A nineteen dash zero one six with the condition that all trucks must turn right out of the driveway for development.
Do you put that in? Okay. Excuse me. It is a right turn, a left turn, that doesn't make sense. Okay, Bruce, would you like to make a, uh, a second thing since she, we had to change it? Okay. All in, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, Tim, we're ready for the next one.
The next item we have is R nineteen dash zero one seven. The applicant is Mason Holding LLC. Their address is one-two-two-zero Nathan Boulevard, Loveville, Georgia. The parcel number is C O zero four zero zero one zero five zero zero. The current zoning is V three. On the application, the applicant has asked that the light industrial be changed to CH, which is a lesser zoning than the light industrial. This property, we just annexed, we just, we're annexed, now we have to rezone it to a city zone.
Everybody understand that, everything that Tim has said. Do you have any questions? Um, will anybody have a question? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Let me explain what, what's favorable, what's, what's CH zoning allows.
Ma'am?
The applicant is, uh, he said he wrote down the wrong zoning when he submitted the application. The light industrial requires, uh, more road frontage for lots than the CH does. And as my understanding, he will be subdividing these lots for the offices these put in the complex. And the design would not work with the two-hundred-foot road frontage per lot as required of the light industrial.
So it's essentially the same thing, just the frontage would be a little smaller.
Correct, inside of the complex, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, back to my group. Do I have a motion that we accept this?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion too.
I may have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are we ready for the next one? A nineteen?
The next item we have is A nineteen dash zero one eight. The applicant is Upris Development LLC. Their field box is twenty-seven ninety, sorry, twenty-seven forty-eight, Loveville. Parcel number is C O zero four zero 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 nine G. Present zoning is V three. It's right side of the previous one. Previous case, the acreage is five point two-six acres. On Tuck Road and is for office use.
Anybody on this board have any questions? Anybody in the audience have questions? Yes, yes, ma'am, right there. Will you say it? It's hard to hear when you say it.
My name is Tricia Elliott. Uh, my question is acres for office warehouse. Do we know for what purpose?
Tim?
No, I understand your question, office.
Yeah, zones for office warehouse use, for office warehouse use. For what purpose? Office warehouse use, for what?
Well, it'll be, I mean, for like plumbing companies or, or businesses like that, this is going to be a complex, there's going to be more than one office warehouse use in there. It's basically, my understanding, the applicants here, uh, it's going to be like, a place they just built on Larson Road, uh, here to pull ass. You know where I'm talking about, the side, the elementary school, side bakery, elementary. It's going to be that type of building, but there's going to be more than one building. It's going to be a complex.
So it won't be a big industrial-type warehouse thing?
No, it'll be individual, individual buildings.
Yes, ma'am?
Pam, I would say this is starting today is that Tuck Road is used by that little truck driver. And if you're going to put more trucks on that, it's a dead threat now. But if you're trying, if you're trying to turn left, you can't over there. So now you got the records, you understand that there, there's some potential lot, big trucks, people turning left on that road.
Potentially, yes. And, and it's my understanding that DOT's, uh, future development for that area is realigning Tuck Road with North Sharon Church. Excuse me, and they're going to be putting in a roundabout. We do not, it's on their future plan for that area.
That's funny that you say that, I used that road a lot, never seen another car.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? In the back, sir?
I'd just like to say that basically the reason a lot of these.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The reason a lot of these people are here tonight is because we want to let you guys know that we don't want even more building, we don't want apartments, and we don't want all this traffic coming into Loveville. That's why we're here. We want to stop a lot of this building, these, you know, things that you guys are trying to do. Just to let you guys know, the traffic is unreal. It's going to cause problems in the future. And we're all here to let you guys know that we don't want you to do it. We want you to basically put the brakes on those things. Slow down your building.
Sir, there's a lot of things that we would like to do too. But we have rules and regulations in Loveville, and God in heaven knows, I'm not for all, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to say that. But we just do what we can, and this, they're, they're trying to do this with one-way turnouts. And we're hoping that DOT is going to work with us on everything. And they're trying to do a roundabout up there. I don't know what else to say to you. Carrie? I love hearing this man talk so much.
For stores. No, the, I have a concern about the roundabout. And the reason is, I live off of North Sharon Church, you know that. And I can't believe, I mean, now we've, we've seen the, the truck, trailer trucks skid down from Tuck Road trying to stop to hit the green line. And I don't know that a roundabout is a real solution to that particular problem. I know it's a DOT issue, but I would ask the planning and zoning, if there's some way that we can address that being in red light with some turn lanes right there as opposed to a turnaround, a roundabout. We've seen too many people just actually slide through the red light trying to stop from Tuck Road down. And that was what I.
According to the, the DOT plan that I've seen for that area is they will be realigning Tuck Road to line up with North Sharon Church. So that's where the roundabout will be.
Well, the issue, yeah, the concern I have is not with.
Eric, you need to, you need to stand, so everybody can hear you. We need a microphone. Listen, I've been the one making that, here one thing that went out. So if somebody can't hear, we'll let the microphone on.
The concern I have is not with Tuck Road's alignment. Yes, the concern I have with Highway twenty north coming into Loveville over that hill. This is where we've almost been hit a bunch of times. And I've seen so many cars skid right through that intersection a lot of times. And, and roundabout is just going to be a, 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 really a disaster in the making for that particular area. Now, if you told them we're going to left that hill, so they'll, they'll level the hill. Yeah, but are they going to bring it down far enough where people can see? It's an eight-foot elevation change. Eight foot is just not going to drop it down enough, in my opinion, because that crest is way up there. I mean, you got to drop that thing down about ten or fifteen feet to get enough of the line to see the light. And the traffic, because the traffic is back from Highway seventy-eight all the way to the top of the hill. But even if you lower it, I don't know that, that still going to be, you know, a wide sight view as to what's going on in the lot, you see what I'm saying? And I don't know that a turnaround of, of roundabouts going to solve that congestion issue or that risk to the rest.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's DOT's plan. Once they get to, uh, the point of where they're willing to start that, then I'm sure there'll be more discussion in meetings. But right now, that's just their future plan.
Yes, ma'am?
We're on the topic of twenty and congestion. Do you know what George, what his plan in regards to Tommy Lee Fuller? Is you take your life in your hand to go left on twenty at Tommy Lee Fuller?
It's my understanding that DOT is not going to do anything at Tommy Lee. I know they told us they might do a double-left turn there. So, you know, that's, that's negotiations that the mayor and, and city manager are having with DOT to try to work something out with that area. But as far as I know, at this moment, they're not planning to do anything with Tommy Lee Fuller. But I'm not, I'm not in the negotiations with DOT and the city manager and the mayor. I'm not.
Now, if we could please, um, we, I, the only I can say to you is we don't have a lot to do with what DOT does. And God in heaven knows, we tried for years. I've been working with the city of Loveville for over fifteen years. And I come to every meeting, mine as well too. And we try very hard and keep thinking where they're supposed to be here. But traffic is something that we have never been able to control. And to get to my house, you have to turn off at seventy-eight. To get out of my street, you have to turn on to seventy-eight. And sometimes we sit there fifteen to twenty minutes before we get out. And I know how you all feel about this. And I am, that's why I'm so proud to see you here tonight. And get in this, this, and help us, you know? Get in touch with DOT, tell them how you feel. Tell them this is our town. And we, and, but you know.
A motion for this council.
Do I have a motion that we accept this?
I make a motion, we accept it.
A second?
A second.
Uh, Rich, second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is R nineteen dash zero one nine. The applicant is Upris Development. Their address is Field Box two-seven-four-eight, Loveville. The parcel number is C O zero four zero 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 nine G. The present zoning is V three. The requested zoning is CH. This is on the annexation we just approved.
Any discussion? Any questions? Yes, sir?
That's the relation, the right turn only, that, that apply all these tracks here, right?
Yes, sir.
That will make the, that condition will make the.
That condition needs to be added. Figure motion. Do I have a motion that we accept this?
I make a motion to set A nineteen dash zero one nine, the condition that all trucks must turn right out of the driveway for development.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Fourteen?
Next item we have is A nineteen dash zero one four. The applicant is Upris Development LLC. Their address is Field Box two-seven-four-eight, Loveville. The parcel number is C O zero four zero 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 nine. Present zoning is V three. It's two point one seven four acres. On Tuck Road. This is the property beside the one that we just rezoned.
Discussion up here? All the pictures of what we're doing is, they put them on screen, and I think that's correct. And that was decided. Anybody up here have any discussion? Catherine, you require? Anybody in the audience? Do I have a motion that we accept this? Amanda, second. Catherine? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is A nineteen dash zero one five. The applicant is Upris Development LLC. Their address is Field Box two-seven-four-eight, Loveville. The parcel number is C O zero four zero 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 nine. The present zoning is V three. The requested zoning is CH for office warehouse use. Present zoning is B3, the requested zoning is CH for office warehouse use.
Do we have any discussion on this? This is supposed to be CH and so it aligns, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Any discussion from anyone up here? From the audience? Okay, do you want to have a motion that we accept this? We're the same position, I'm sorry, yes, let's put that position in there. Second? Any switchy position, you have to jump, you're going to move the ball there. Okay. You made a motion, Bruce. Did somebody say, second?
You have a second?
I'll take the one.
Okay, okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is R-19-020. This is the property that's located on Larson Road. We received a letter from the applicant. This is for the rezoning from R-44 to CN. There was a clerical error when the application was submitted. The attorney for the applicant sent the wrong publication to the law tribune. So this case needs to be tabled until the next planning commission meeting, which will be February 27. So that runs legally by the city of Walton County. So we need a, we need a motion to table this for 30 days.
Did y'all understand what Tim said back in the back? This has been tabled because they sent the wrong publication for advertisement. So it will come up next month and, so do I have a motion that we table this until next month? Richmond's motion?
I second.
For a second? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, case number next, Tim?
Case number is R-19-021. We received a letter from the applicant requesting this rezoning to be tabled for 30 days to the next meeting on February 27.
I make a motion to table it until February 27. Second? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
That's all I have.
Okay. That's all we have on the agenda tonight, but everybody please, I have to say this and I feel like it's very important because I love the city of Loganville. It's a little town, we love it a little town and I'm proud of it just like it is. I'm so proud that you all came tonight and please don't stop coming to these meetings. This little committee up here, what we do, we are, we are, we came and had to give a spill about what we do, where to live, all this kind of stuff, to get this job. We make $25 when we come to a meeting, we all know that. Sometimes we make $25, but anyway, I want you to know-
They withhold on that too.
It's almost everything that we do is for the city of Loganville. We, we were not asked to help in any way in any of the things that have happened lately. It did not come to our board and I want you to know that. Oh, I'm, I'm not, I can't say anything about what's happening, except I can say this to all of you. Loganville is our town. My husband and I have been here 57 years. He was born here, he's 91 years old. And if you need to say something, you talk to the Loganville City Council and the mayor. You talk to the Loganville Development Association. They are making the decisions on everything. And if you love this little town as much as we love this little town, please let yourself be known. Every meeting we have, let's fill this up. Most of the time, we have a zoning meeting, we have the people that want to rezone their property, that's it. City council meetings, want to know who's there? My husband, Ms. Lyndy Guthrie, Ms. Melody Long, and Barbara, and Betty. And that's it. Nobody else comes to city council meetings. And how many times have I gone home and said, Dad, what can we do to get our people more involved with our town? Because if you're not involved, and you don't, you know, whether you vote or not, it's up to you. But you need to be involved, because I'm going to tell you something, you better be involved with what's going on right now. And that's all I'm going to say for getting bad trouble.
I can say a lot more. Go lie down towards between you and see what they're involved with doing.
Okay, all right, everybody. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, oh, I want to give you just a few minutes, I can't give you all of them.
I have a question, wait, because you made the statement that y'all haven't been involved and normally would have been. What, if you had been involved, what, what would you normally be doing with all this mess that's going up? What if they take you away from you?
We're not involved because it's land development and we're not here to discuss that. We really can't discuss that because we don't know, we don't know. I can't give you an answer on anything, ma'am, because I have not been asked anything. I'm a part of our committee up here and we can't give you answers. That's what I, that's why I told you who you need to talk to. And I put today, several people that I know also put the LDA names on your Facebook. You also have the council members and the mayor, we have all of their addresses. And, and please, all I can do is say to you, please talk to your representatives. Because we cannot answer any questions, we don't know any answers. We, none of us know any answers. So let's do, have, to adjourn, I'll listen. Second?
I'll second for you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we all adjourned. Thank you all so very much for coming.